Start with this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. If you recall at our special board meeting last week, the board asked Healthcare Agency to do an assessment of our response capability here in Orange County to COVID-19 and to have a readiness plan drafted and presented to the board and also to provide information, providing to other agencies and training for our health workers as well as first responders. And based on the board's action last week, Healthcare Agency was going to come back and present the full report to the board on March 24th. And I really thank Healthcare Agency for being proactive and agendizing the item today, strictly for information only up to date today. Given how fluid the situation is and the different recommendations that have been coming from different government agencies, not the least of which is the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, I think it's a good opportunity for the Healthcare Agency, in particular, our Health Officer, Dr. Nicole Quick, to apprise the county and the board on basic information that the public would like to know. Information such as how many cases there are in Orange County, what is the alert level we are at, and how does one get tested for COVID-19? And if there is an infection and it's spreading, do we have enough test kits on hand to satisfy that demand? And do we have private providers, as we have heard from some of the government agencies, that are being contracted currently to ramp up production of these test kits? And so, in light of the CDC's recommendation last night that older Americans should try to stay indoor, get their appropriate amount of medication and food to sustain themselves so that they can hopefully ride out the peak of this risk out here in the public. So with that, I'll leave it up to Richard Sanchez, our Director of Healthcare Agency, and Dr. Quick, our Health Officer, to start, at least with the questions that I posed earlier.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. Richard Sanchez, Director of the Healthcare Agency. We actually had a presentation, but if you'd like to start with those questions, we can go ahead and do that.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead and start with your presentation.
So just very short, quickly, I was going to speak on the items that are in front of you right now on the screen. Dr. Quick is going to give an update. Donna Boston with Emergency Management was going to give an update, and then Barry Rondanella from the airports. And then we'd be available for questions, if that's okay.
Please.
So, as you know, yesterday I sent a board memo to all the board members outlining responses to each of the things in front of you, so I'll keep it very short. The short version actually is, many of the activities that were directed to the Healthcare Agency were already things we already do. As you know, we engage with the health community countywide, the hospital systems, providers, doctors, through a provider network. In addition, we work with CalOptima very closely, working on coordinating activities related to all health issues, and in particular, this item. And as you know, Dr. Quick and Dr. Ramirez, the Medical Director at CalOptima, gave a presentation at the last CalOptima meeting. So outreach activities are ongoing. As an attachment to that board letter was a laundry list of all the ones that we're already doing. It does take time, but I think it is useful to reach out to audiences and educate them on what's going on, because unfortunately, there's a lot of rumors, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and some of this has been impacting local businesses. So we want to make sure that correct information is getting out there. To that end, I do want to mention, there is a flyer out front related to a tele-town hall that the county board told us to, and there's the flyer right there, in English this Thursday, and then in Spanish, Vietnamese, and Korean following week. That is being coordinated through the CEO's office, Jessica Witt, so she can provide any question, any information you have, you may want on that. Going to the previous slide, disease control, surveillance and control, we have a whole division that does nothing but that. We are responsible to keep a tally of all communicable diseases within Orange County. This is a communicable disease, so we are working towards that. Many of you have met our Infection Control Officer, Dr. Matt Son. He works very closely with the hospitals and other providers to educate them specifically on coronavirus. And as you mentioned, Vice Chair Doe, today is more of a verbal update. On the 24th, we have, hope to have a full PowerPoint explain everything that we're doing. First responder preparedness, once again, something we already do. As you know, we have EMS within the Healthcare Agency that works with fire and the ambulance companies to make sure they're prepared and know how to deal with any situation they may come upon, including somebody who may be infectious and have personal protective equipment available to them to respond appropriately. Emergency response coordination, we have surge plans already in place. Once again, something we already do. We work with the medical community, hospitals, just in case we get into a pandemic mode, they're trained and ready to roll should that occur. We're not there, I want to make that clear. We are not there in Orange County. And in terms of hospital readiness, every hospital in Orange County can handle a COVID-19 patient if there would be a need. So we are, we have enough beds available in the moment, and we are monitoring that as we go forward. In addition, I would like to add, there are other flyers out there in the lobby for anybody who may be interested. And in addition, I would like to mention our website. It's on the flyer, and it's on that flyer as well. Everything that we're talking about, we're very transparent. We have up on our website. I also want to mention the Health Referral Line. This is a line available eight to five, Monday through Friday, for anybody who may have questions. Do I feel like I may have it or have come in contact with anybody? Know that we are working very closely with California Department of Public Health and CDC, so we get notified of cases that travelers and are come in contact with a positive patient. Dr. Quick can go into that in more detail, so we're aware of what's going on. But for questions that the public may have, they can call our Health Referral Line. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Quick.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Dr. Nicole Quick, County Health Officer. So I'm going to go over a couple of the bullet points up there, but to answer some of the questions, let me just give sort of a recap of where we are worldwide. There's over 100,000 cases right now, over 4,000 deaths. In California, there's over 700 cases and 26 deaths. Califor-- I'm sorry, US. California, we're at 133 cases and two deaths. In Orange County, we have a total of four cases right now. Three of those are travel-related, one is a contact to a close case. So I'm sure everyone's aware that more and more counties are talking about community transmission. And what community transmission means is a case that's not linked to a known source. So it's not linked to a travel to an area with ongoing community exposure and/or a case. Our latest one is a link to a case. So we still do not have evidence of community transmission right now in Orange County. First bullet point up there, and to get to some of the Vice Chair's question, testing capacity. So right now in Orange County, our public health lab is testing for the COVID-19. We are prioritizing individuals who are at highest risk. So those are individuals who traveled to one of the countries that has ongoing transmission, contacts two cases, individuals in hospitals that are severely ill with respiratory symptoms with no other explanation. That means they don't have flu or any other of the number of things we would expect. We are going to continue at our public health lab to prioritize those individuals. Both LabCorp and Quest, which are commercial labs that have capacity across the US, have announced testing. We have yet to have a test result come to us from one of them, but we are actively working with our medical providers right now to sort of transition so that the high-risk people will continue to come to our public health lab, whereas the other testing can go through their contracts that they have with the commercial labs. We all recognize the need for more testing, so there's been a big push from federal, state, as well as us locally, to get that up and going. Happy to answer more questions on that if I didn't fully cover it. I also want to talk a little bit about, additionally, while we're on this, talking about cases. Our Communicable Disease Control Staff are taking hundreds of calls a day from medical providers, in the range of about 200 a day. So these are individuals who are calling our staff to get information on guidance, on testing, and so forth. Health Referral Line that Richard just mentioned, we'll get that phone number up there again for anybody who needs it, has been taking in the range of 100 calls a day. After hours, we have public health staff available to, once again, talk to providers about any question about testing that may come up overnight. We would like to thank Control One, because we have had a vastly increased number of calls, anywhere in the range of 20 to 50, just on an overnight time period, which is much more than we normally take. But once again, we're there to sort of 24 hours a day, answer questions and coordinate testing at this point. A couple other updates that I think is important, in addition to the CDC guidance on the older adults, which, just to let everybody know, today we will be doing an additional flyer similar to what we have out there, sort of messaging that to that population. And it is, adults over the age of 60, as well as those with diabetes, heart disease, or sort of any other pre-existing condition that you haven't compromised immune system, are the ones that are increased risk. And what the messaging is at this point to those individuals is to take extra precautions and consider whether or not attending events and so forth is appropriate. That's what we're, and we'll have an updated flyer on that today. CDPH on Saturday night, in addition to releasing some mass gathering guidance, which essentially kind of breaks down categories into two broad ones, which is if you don't have community spread and have community spread. It's generally geared towards event planners and the things that they can do, which are the same messages we have been getting out over and over again. If you're sick, please don't attend these events, make sure to wash your hands frequently, not touch your face, and so forth. So that's the guidance that's come out to event planners. They also pushed out guidance to schools, both K through 12 and higher education. I think the takeaway from the school closure is that we will work closely with our school districts if there is a case that's identified either in a teacher or a student. So that's going to be a case-by-case determination that we will make with those entities. That's the update from public health. Do we want to go through the other ones, or are there questions I can answer right now?
I have a question that, so we had two, and two additional patients now, that those two are self-quarantined at their house, and it's been how long now? It's been about?
So the two, yeah, so we have, we had the one original that completely has recovered. The other three cases are all isolated right now, in home isolation. And that, and the way that we will clear them is, once they are completely not symptomatic anymore, we start testing them every other day, and they have to have the two negative tests separated by 24 hours before we'll clear them.
Also, you said four means that one, the person who fully recovered.
Is counted in that.
So you counted that.
Yes.
So third person, that is, that person in the hospital or self-quarantined?
That person is also isolated at home, and that is a contact to a known case. So that individual is not that community transmission. It's called a person-to-person contact, but it's to a known case.
Okay, got it. And Vice Chair Doe?
Thank you. Dr. Quick, when we look at China first and then Italy, their number of fatalities are much higher than ours. Then we see the quarantine first starting in China again, and then now Italy, with France, right, with the number of fatalities following after Italy, and then now projecting to where the responses that we start to see here in the US with colleges canceling final exams. I know because my daughter is one of them. And events are being canceled. Is it because they have greater risk over in other countries, or is it just one of those things where it starts there, it's rolling, and we are now, it may come to us?
Yeah, I think at this point, it's hard to know. We have not done, for the number of tests that we've done in the US is probably lower than a lot of those countries. So once we get the commercial labs up and going, that'll give us a better idea of how many people have been infected here. And as you know, we have sort of two outbreaks going on. There's one in Seattle and one in Northern California, where we definitely have outbreaks. And so if you're asking, will it get to the point where we have the same case fatality rate as other countries, we need to do more testing. And once again, with this, some of the individuals that get COVID-19 get sicker in their second week of illness, so we're too early in sort of our infection rates to know what our case fatality rate will be.
When you look at, again, Italy, France, and then you juxtapose that with Germany, which has zero fatality, can we draw any, any kind of surmise, any kind of explanation for that discrepancy?
You know, I don't think that we're in the position at this point to be able to necessarily tell. One thing we do know about the COVID-19, and this is pretty well established through all the countries, is in general, kids are not getting severely ill. And that sort of the case fatality rate steadily climbs up, with the highest in those over 80 as well as over 60. So there has been some evidence out there that when you have a population where a lot of older adults are infected, such as in Italy, that you're going to have a higher case fatality rate. But really, it's too early to know in some of the other countries that don't have as many cases, what that case fatality rate. But I do want to reinforce, because I think it's important for everybody to hear, that children are not getting severely ill from this.
I talked to a pediatrician, and she said the same thing. And I talked to two doctors, and their question for us is, do we have a separate number for providers, like say, primary care doctors versus the public?
Yes, so the Health Referral Line is geared towards the public. We have a communicable disease, that was the number I reported out when people are calling our, directly to our Communicable Disease Control Staff. And when we push out all of our provider alerts, we list the phone number for business hours as well as after hours, so we can get that out. And we really try to push that to all providers in the entire county.
Great, thank you. Please continue.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Donna, is Donna's going to come out, or?
As Dr. Quick mentioned, and I think I mentioned as well, this is a very dynamic situation. We actually have five cases. So we have four travel and one case to case within the county, so there are a total of five cases now in Orange County.
Oh, so it's not, including that?
Including the one who's fully recovered and is moving.
Four are self-quarantined at this point.
Yes. So we actually do a case count of past cases and all cases.
Right, right.
So that's why we, five.
Okay, I'm going to invite Donna Boston for emergency management.
Thank you, Chairwoman Steele and members of the Board of Supervisors, Donna Boston. I'm with the Sheriff's Department Emergency Management Division. And I think I'm just going to speak real quickly about how our operational coordination is going on with the jurisdictions within the county. So for a disease outbreak type of topic, the CEO is the Director of Emergency Services for the county, and the Healthcare Agency is the Operational Area Coordinator. And the Operational Area includes all of the cities in Orange Counties, in Orange County, and the school districts, special districts, all of our local government partners within the county boundary. And so we work daily to coordinate with those jurisdictions. We do that every day. So we're able to use that daily coordination in this situation. And what we've done is we've put into play Operational Area Conference Calls. So we are holding weekly conference calls, and those do include all of those local government jurisdictions, so cities, school districts, special districts. We also have state and level, and federal level organizations on those calls as well. On those calls, we will have an update, a situation update from the Healthcare Agency. So that's what will take place first. Then there's an opportunity for jurisdictions to request, formally request, resources, because the county, as the lead organization in the Operational Area, we are required to share information with the Operational Area and triage resource requests. And so we will ask for those formal resource requests from those jurisdictions, and then we will open it up to a question-and-answer period so that those jurisdictions can directly engage with the Healthcare Agency. So we've had two calls, and those have gone very, very well. We are also participating in the statewide Operational Area Conference Calls, so that we can share information between counties and also recommend solutions for implementation statewide. So those have been going well, those are every other day during the week. And so we're actively participating in those. The county has also activated our Web EOC system, and that is our Crisis Management System, so that jurisdictions can put in any of their information into that system, and we can see the situation in every single jurisdiction in the county. It's the only system that we have that does that. The EOC is not currently activated, but the Healthcare Agency, Agency Operations Center is at a working level, so that's working well. The EOC will require activation if a city proclaims an emergency, because we have already have the county's proclamation of emergency, and the State Emergency Services Act requires activation of the Emergency Operations Center if the county and a city proclaim an emergency. So that would be a trigger that would be met if a city proclaims. We are in a good situation in terms of coordination for this, this type of situation. We have done prior planning for all sorts of disease outbreaks, so we have that bank of plans already, and we're positioned very well to manage the evolving situation.
Donna, could you just stay there, Supervisor Wagner?
I'm going to venture into maybe some dangerous territory and ask to do math. And in my world, that is actually very dangerous, but I think this math is relatively simple. The headline tomorrow might well be that the county's coronavirus cases has jumped 20% overnight. We went from four to five. It's still one in 650,000 people in the county. And so I'm trying to put the real risk in some perspective. And I guess, asking if this is, and maybe, Ms. Boston, you're not the person, it's Dr. Quick or Director Sanchez for this question, but to put it in perspective, I'm hearing from chambers of commerce in my, in the cities in my district, that businesses are cutting back on, on travel to Orange County. We're seeing tourism down, we're seeing conventions get canceled, and, and, I guess my question is, is from a public health standpoint, is that an appropriate response? When we look at the real numbers and the real, I was going to say rate of infection, we don't even know the rate of infection, because we don't know how many people get it and have the sniffles and move on and think it's a cold or, or, or something along those lines. You can't even calculate a, an infection rate if you don't know the denominator. And so, help the public analyze these concerns, these cases, and maybe more importantly, the headlines. Is this a disaster enlading?
Sure, so through the chair, absolutely. I think, and everybody's going to get really sick of us repeating this, but right now to Orange County residents, flu is a much greater risk than COVID-19, hands down. Flu has infected millions and has killed thousands versus COVID-19. Now that being said, I think part of people's sort of fear related to this is we simply don't know what this is going to look like. And getting back to some of the other questions, we don't have wide enough testing to know how many people are infected across the United States and how many people get mild disease. We do know that up to 80% of people that get this have mild disease or asymptomatic. So putting that into perspective, I think is important. The guidance documents that came out from CDPH try to sort of get to that risk stratification in a community that has community spread versus not. But regardless, this is guidance documents, and what we want individuals in Orange County to feel is empowered, but what they can do personally, which is those simple public health measures, washing hands, staying home when you're sick, trying to avoid being in crowds where others are sick if you're at that highest-risk population. So I think that's really the message we want to push, is what individuals can be empowered to do. Does that help answer? Okay.
Sure. Supervisor Doe, Vice Chair Doe?
Dr. Quick, to follow up on the same line of questions, and I was trying to get to that point earlier, comparing the responses from different jurisdictions or countries. At the same time right now, we have government agencies at a federal and state level that are asking their employees to be ready to work offsite. So when you have government agencies, you know, preparing to respond in that way, how can the public get any kind of confidence? And in terms of one extreme, which is quarantine, and then the other extreme, which is we have, what, you said five total cases in the history of so far of COVID-19 in Orange County out of a population of 3.2 million people? That's a very different, two different very pictures, very different pictures. How do we reconcile the two?
Yeah, I think what we are trying to do is point people to the guidance documents, and then also sort of help people to understand that while these guidance documents are geared towards what we know about respiratory infections in general. So we do know with respiratory infections in general, when do people get them? People get them when you're around sick people. So presumably, if there is a lot of it circulating in any community in California, the best way to not get that is to try not to be around sick people. So the guidance you're seeing coming out is really geared towards that. Now, I do think that CDPH attempted to sort of separate out those with community transmission and those not. You have big entities that may have offices across the entire country that have urged all of their employees to try to telecommute, because they're dealing with potentially different areas that may have an outbreak or not. And that guidance has come from both, I'd say, CDC and from the state, so it's sort of difficult at the local level to do anything other than point to the guidance and really help people understand that it's guidance that's coming out. Risk perspective is critical at every point. So yes, the flu is more risky to individuals, and with our five cases in Orange County, and even as we expect to pick up more cases because we're doing testing, the overall risk to individuals in Orange County is low.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bartlett?
Thank you, Chair. So not to ring alarm bells, but my sister lives in Westchester County, and one of the cities in Westchester County has about 20 reported cases right now. And it started where one person was not feeling well, asked his neighbor to take him to the doctor. Well, this person had infected his whole family, his friend that had taken him to the doctor got infected and infected his whole family. So now we've got a number of community transmission cases. So people do need to be very, very cautious, because this can spread very quickly. And, you know, unbeknownst to this neighbor who was trying to help out, he had no idea. And the person who was sick had no idea that he had coronavirus. So people do need to take adequate precautions, because it can spread very quickly through communities. And now we've got this little city in New York where they've got 20 cases of community spread, and it happened literally overnight.
Yeah, and to speak on that a little bit more, that is what has been seen in various areas, Northern California, Seattle, New York as well. What I would like to reiterate again is, as we expect to see more cases in Orange County, we are really going to be focusing on protecting those at increased risk. So that means maintaining our healthcare workforce. So that means infection control in hospitals to prevent that, as well as targeting the prevention efforts on some of these high-risk populations. And I think that that is really what is, the CDC is trying to get out there, those at higher risk. Because while we're very concerned about these community spread and outbreaks, we do know that the pockets of individuals who are getting the most ill and having the most consequences are those older adults. And I do think that what is also happening in these areas that have the more cases that are getting picked up and the community spread that's getting picked up, the more tests we do, the more likely we are to find it. And so right now, it very much appears that there are areas that are higher risk than others, but generally, overall, we still want to say that in Orange County, it is low risk.
Thank you.
Supervisor JP?
Yes, thank you. It's been my pleasure to twice visit the Emergency Operations Center, and I'm very impressed how well organized they are to be ready for unknown, basically. And the way it's organized is quite incredible with resources for just about any kind of emergency, including infectious diseases. I also had the privilege of visiting our laboratory, and it is on par with the CDC and does a great job, and I appreciate all the work that's going on there. And I think, and as a resident of Orange County, we take great pride and confidence in the resources we have available to fight the coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
I want to say thank you to Healthcare Agency, Richard and Dr. Quick, that, you know, we've been working together almost, what, two and a half weeks, three weeks, that, you know, almost every day, sometimes twice, three times a day, and thank you for what you do. And this is just not making our residents panic, but you know what? This is-- And this is just not making our residents panic, but you know what, this is only for, we are preparing, so they have any questions, we are ready to answer those questions. That's why we are doing this. And nowhere is it safe anymore, so I asked Barry to come out and, you know, regarding the airport, what are we doing with the airport now?
Thank you Chairwoman Steele, Barry Rondonella, John Wayne Airport Director. We have two main focuses that we have been coordinating very closely with the healthcare agency on in regard to COVID-19. The first is messaging regarding the limiting of the spread of COVID-19 and the second is cleaning and sterilization schedules. So in terms of messaging, excuse me, it is not COVID-19. Dr. Quick graciously recorded a public announcement that runs in our terminals on an hourly basis talking about how to limit the spread of COVID-19. She also came out to the airport and provided frontline training for employees of John Wayne Airport, including airlines tenants and the Sheriff's Department. I distributed a letter to all of our John Wayne Airport tenants, also including airlines tenants and employees about the actions the airport is taking and information on how to limit the spread of the disease. We have placed digital prevention graphics in all of our digital advertising media, the pylons in the terminals, the booths, the information booths, as well as other advertising medium. We have posters throughout the terminals with the same message, pop-up banners in high-traffic areas in the terminals. We have posted on the JWA internet site a link to the HCA's COVID-19 information. And finally, we have utilized social media to amplify the OC, HCA, and CDC travel health prevention messaging. In terms of increased and additional cleaning and disinfecting, we recently amended our janitorial contract with flagship contractor to increase cleaning and disinfecting in the terminals by 25%. We will be coming to you with retroactive approval for that amendment in the coming weeks. We've increased disinfecting of the TSA screening checkpoints to every three hours in addition to the ongoing nightly cleaning that is done. We've increased the cleaning schedule of airline kiosk, check-in kiosks, they get a lot of touches. HMS Host, the largest concessionaire for food and beverage, has increased surface cleaning schedules. We have deployed 16 HCA-donated sanitizing dispensers, hand sanitizing dispensers, dispensers, with another 25 from Hoag Hospital on the way in the coming days. Hand sanitizers and disinfecting wipes have been placed in parking payment booths and increased, and there has been an increased disinfecting schedule of all handles and seats within the booths. Finally, we accepted the donation of more than 80 cases of Cal wipes, surface disinfectant, from a company by the name of Metrics for use in sterilizing the terminals.
Thank you Barry. Any more questions or actually Vice Chair Doe?
Thank you Madam Chair. Barry, can you share with the public and the board some of the practices that Southwest Airlines are doing in terms of the disinfectant that they use on their planes and also the air filter that they use?
Yes, so not just Southwest Airlines, United Airlines, American Airlines, most of the leading airlines have communicated and messaged to their frequent flyers and others that they have website or email information for about the filtering of aircraft air, which is very similar, they state to hospitals, the filtering mechanisms and the filter microns themselves. They have scheduled increased cleaning of airline seats, tray tables, instructed their cabin crews, an effective cleaning messages or methods for coronavirus and other viruses, as well as how to deal with sick passengers that are symptomatic.
I heard that Southwest actually uses hospital-grade disinfectant in the cleaning of their cabins?
Yes, and I would say most of the legacy carriers do that as well.
Okay, they have odd kind of follow suit.
I just got a message from United, so, and American, because I fly them from time to time, and both of those airlines are doing that, the same thing.
Perfect, so if you can hopefully get that same message out to the other operators at our airport.
Absolutely, in fact, one of the things that I missed in terms of messaging is we provided the airlines with the CDC guidelines for commercial aircraft cabin crews, so they do have that information and we will continue to speaking with them.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you Barry, thank you everybody, Richard, Dr. Quick, and Donna. Oh, you still have?
Yes. Is anyone here from the Sheriff's Department that can answer on the response, maybe even the Health Department? Because this is probably more within your province as far, come on up please.
He wasn't about to leave, yeah.
Ross Calatton, I'm a commander with the Sheriff's Department over field operations.
Commander, good morning.
Good morning y'all.
And this is a joint question really between, because obviously you run the jail, but the Health Department runs the screening. What are we doing to screen the population, the inmate population when they come in?
Well, first of all, that would be a question for medical, who we work hand-in-hand, who works in our jail.
Right, thank you.
But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you had to do with our.
Sure.
So the individuals coming in right now are screened sort of with a respiratory questionnaire that involves respiratory symptoms, fever, and then if those are positive, a travel history, have they gone to any place where there's ongoing community transmission coming? Does that answer?
So they need to exhibit symptoms before we actually inquire into the factors for the COVID-19?
I don't want to speak, not having reviewed the latest, I believe it's a questionnaire with respiratory symptoms and travel history, but to get at your, I don't want to give you the wrong information if they have to say yes to the respiratory symptoms before answering the travel, but the screening questionnaire is similar to what we're also doing in our clinic settings as well.
Can that be part of the?
For next week?
Report on the 24th?
Absolutely.
Yes. And another question on our courtyard, the shelter across the street. We know a large part of the population may be of greater risk because of their health condition. At this point, I would like to make a directive and I would invite my colleagues to weigh in as well. I mean, it's the fact that it's in my district, so that's why I'm making the directive, but it really pertains to a protocol that we should all adopt, which is, right now at the courtyard, we actually serve food, so people, anybody can walk in and be served there. And given, right, the us, that's an interest in lowering the risk, especially to that population, my directive would be for the us to stop the food service to non-residents at the courtyard, meaning that we don't have people that are not residents there going in and out three times a day.
Just for meals.
Just for food, because there's no way to control that risk for the population who actually lives there.
Understood.
So that would be my directive for the courtyard.
Absolutely.
And going forward, you might want to also, with shelters and other districts, to kind of get a gauge on what the preference is there. But for the courtyard, again, having seen it, observed it from the very beginning, I know a large part of the population there, you know, are susceptible because of the health condition to some of the advisories that Dr. Quick had given us earlier.
Richard, so we have little over 400, you know, residents there, so out of that, how many people are joining for the meals three times a day?
You know, I don't have somebody from our shelter staff with me, but I can make sure we get that information, but.
Substantial.
To the Vice Chair's point, I'm not sure that we actually make that count because it's pretty much open door.
So anybody can just, you know, come in and then they can?
Get a meal.
Really? Okay, love to have those numbers.
Sure, and please know also that all the populations that you're talking about, we've had discussions with in terms of what's going on related to C19, I call it C19, with the jail population and also with the shelter population. Our shelter staff have reached out to all the shelter staff, as you know, we have public health nurses that deal with homeless individuals, they've visited all the shelters, and we've actually had training on infection control at all the shelters as well. We will continue doing that with the shelters as well.
Right, given the very close proximity, right, that people live in the shelter, in the courtyard in particular, and given the health condition, and when we look at the number of meals served on the average at the courtyard, it's around between 500 to 600. So it's safe to assume that out of the 425 who live there, that the number above that, somewhere in a neighborhood of 100, are simply people from outside who go in there every meal to be fed. Mr. CEO?
Just for clarification, so the courtyard also provides other services. So am I correct in understanding that we want to limit all courtyard services to the residents?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report, appreciate it. Oh Supervisor Bartlett?
Quick question, and I understand Supervisor Doe's concerns, but with the courtyard population that we have there, just the residents themselves wander in and out daily and they're out on the street mingling with the public, et cetera. So I'm a little bit hesitant, I guess, because if we limit to, if we limit everything to the population that is resident there, then we're displacing those that want to come in for a meal. I'm just thinking, maybe we should make the conditions more sanitary. So to give you an example, Disney Cruises, and I've been on a number of the Disney Cruises, when you go into the restaurant, every person going into the restaurant is handed an antibacterial wipe that you wipe your hands with. And maybe that's something that we can start at our local shelters here regarding food service. Because I don't think limiting to the population that is just resident there, the residents go in and out. And so we're not, I don't think we're gaining anything in the direction we want to move in by limiting the food service just to the population that's served at the courtyard. We need to make the conditions more sanitary for everyone and perhaps by giving, dispensing antibacterial wipes, that might be a great means to move in that right direction, as opposed to restricting services and meals to the public at large.
Sure, and this is not a staff, this is a policy decision, so we're not expecting you to enunciate your own standard here. But my feeling is. So I, we don't want to get into a countywide basis. Right now, the directive to the courtyard in my district is limit the service to the courtyard because of the COVID-19. It makes no sense, yes, people move around in everyday life, but we still have the advisory to isolate and to minimize risk. And so the idea that we're going to have hundreds of people traipsing in and out of the courtyard and not exposing people to greater risk, that defies the logic that we use in giving the advisory so far. Obviously, the standard of sanitary standards can affect it, but that doesn't mean that we should continue to have the increasing the density of the people in the courtyard. That is going to contribute to greater risk. And so at this point, I want to put a stop to this, this is not an item on the agenda for now in the courtyard, that's in my district, that's what I would like to see, and then we can agendize it for county-wide discussion later, okay?
Supervisor JP?
Yeah, I think we're inviting more trouble than we're solving in doing that. I can't see turning away hungry people, where do they go? They'll be very unhappy, and I don't know enough about the in-and-outs at the courtyard in particular, whether someone is hungry, oh, I'm moving in tomorrow or tonight, when I got a space for us. I'd also like to know more about the services the courtyard provides to the people that are not resident there. If you can call a homeless person or resident somewhere, that's interesting. So I would not be in favor of doing that. Perhaps we can have more information at our next meeting on the 24th and give a more in-depth consideration of that, but I would not be in favor of doing that today.
Well, when we have other shelters like Bridges, Kramer Lane in Anaheim, that's only by referral. And we have other shelters around the county doing the same thing. In fact, the one operated by the City of Santa Ana is only by referral. The courtyard, as far as I know, is the only one that has this model. And so to somehow say that we are troubled by that practice so that we can minimize the risk of infection to our residents there, because that practice to me is inconsistent with what we have been doing countywide. Why is it that, given this emergency, that we can't take this step? It's one thing to say that we go, we do this on an ongoing basis, but at least at this point, we need to do things that we think that would be consistent with the medical advisories that we have been given, which is to minimize risk and not have greater mass congregation. And now what we're doing is, we already have a mass congregation, we are adding, we are maintaining a condition that will increase that congregation and that density even more.
So thank you Vice Chair Doe. County Council, you know what, this is direction versus policy, so can you, you know, we are, we keep discussing it here right now, so what's the next move that, you know, what we have to do?
Thank you Madam Chair. When the Brown Act references directives, it is in the context of the board giving direction to staff to place an item of business on a future agenda for discussion and possible action. As a policy decision, it would be my recommendation that this item, that the board not take action on this item today because of the Brown Act's prohibition on taking action on items that are not listed on the agenda, but instead refer it to a future meeting. And I haven't spoken with the CEO or healthcare agency staff about this, but there might be licenses or there might be contracts involved that we'd want to take a look at to see if there's anything that might require an amendment. So it would be my recommendation not for the board to take action today, but rather to direct staff to place an item of business on a future agenda.
Okay Supervisor JP?
Yes, as part of the next meeting, if we're discussing this item or agendizing it, I'd like to know what alternative there would be for the people who come there to eat. If they can't go there, where can they go? Can we provide another alternative in another location? Thank you.
Vice Chair Doe?
We can ask those questions of all the other shelters, the way that they are run is when they are not allowed to go in there just on their own, what do they do? We do that all the time, when we voted to open up Kramer Lane, I don't understand why there's a double standard, that it was okay in Anaheim to do it by referral, closed door, but yet here it somehow offends some kind of conscience. So that's one. And secondly, I have, I take issue with this interpretation of directives. I've been sitting on this board for five years, we have done hundreds of directives, and we are talking about programs and doing things and, just similar to what I'm saying here, at a minimum to one facility while we wait, and we can discuss this more on a county-wide policy later, and then somehow, in this instance, it becomes a Brown Act violation. So I, at this point, my question, my directive is very specific, very targeted, very limited in scope, and I believe it is within the right of the supervisors in their district to at least have a condition that they feel that will help to address the policy concern that they have. And that's what I'm trying to address here is the risk of spreading or introducing and then spreading the COVID-19 in a facility that is, that is under the right control of the county. And I think it is irresponsible for us to talk about everything else, reducing risk, and then in this one instance, it becomes a Brown Act violation. It makes no sense to me, because otherwise. It makes no sense to me, because otherwise, we can, we can agendize an item about the jail response, we can agendize an item about the airport response. Why is it that they can respond? But yet, in this instance, in my courtyard, in my district, it becomes a Brown Act violation.
Supervisor Bartlett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think the difference between the courtyard and our Bridges at Kramer Shelter, Bridges at Kramer is appointment-only, and it's pretty much a lockdown facility. The courtyard is our low-barrier-to-entry shelter, and the residents there at the courtyard, they are free to wander in and out during the day. So they're out there mingling in the public. So I'm not sure we're going to even be able to achieve what you want to achieve, because they have the ability to come and go as they please during the daytime hours. And unless you're willing to lock down the facility to keep that isolated there, I'm not sure we're going to attain the goals that you think you're going to be able to achieve.
Okay. Okay, let's do this. Thank you very much for a cautious measure that, you know, you want to suggest, but at the same time, that, you know, I really appreciate that other supervisors with compassion with these people. So why don't we ask staff to bring it up to, for directions, follow directions, but how are we going to serve that, you know, those people in and out for the meals? And we can have other options that, you know, with these people, then, you know what, we can come back with the staff, you can just direct?
Sure. And I am willing to wait on that, but, but first of all, the other, the point, the other point of view is not the only one that's compassionate. Let's be very clear here. I opened up the courtyard because, out of compassion, and we take care of the people out of compassion. So this is an issue that's not related to compassion, because everyone, you know, acts out of compassion. But here is, here is, I'm going to do, to say, and I have to put on the record, the concern of the people in my district. It is really easy for other supervisors to talk about maintaining a low-barrier shelter. Why? Because this is the only one that we have, that we operate. And so, so it is really easy to just kind of say, hey, we need to maintain that, you know, but in, but until everyone has to operate someone, some facility like this, you know, it's not fair that District One is only one.
You're using COVID-19 to attack the homeless people? Where the hell did you go in on that? Who the hell are you just to attack the homeless people on this disease? What the hell is going on here? You guys have to stop this, ladies. You have to stop this.
Okay, Supervisor Doe, I said compassion means you have a compassion on the existing residents there, so, you know, what I'm saying is, your direction to the staff is good, but we have to ask staff that what's other options for those people that who get fed, you know, at the, at the shelter right out there? So why don't we bring it back? So can you wait for a few days? And then, you know what, staff can come back. It doesn't have to be, you know, waiting for another two weeks for next meeting. So why don't we do that? And that's the direction.
Certainly.
But we have to solve the problem with those people that who are going to get fed, you know, from?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And exactly, that's correct. The board, majority of the board could right now, or the chair could call a special meeting later this week with 24 hours notice.
But this is the direction.
Yes.
It's not the policy change, but this is the direction from Vice Chair Doe, but we want to, we want staff to come back to just report to us that, you know, how are you going to do that? You know, how are we going to serve other people that who just tried to get the meals?
And the board could take that policy decision at a special meeting later this week if the board so decided.
So why don't we do that then? Is that okay? Vice Chair Doe?
Well, he's talking about a special meeting. We don't have a special meeting, so.
We can set it up. Okay. So thank you very much. This is receive and file.